Thank you for putting it together, doing the work to help the people who need help. We need people who need support. Three or four months ago, they probably never thought they needed, but something to give. It's very destabilizing when you find yourself in that situation. I'm just thankful that we're in a position where we can help out and help you guys do the work. I said your writing check is the easy part. I'm happy to do it. It doesn't take any time at all, but you, Joe, and your team and your people and you folks here, all the ones that actually make it happen. And so we're just really thankful that we can partner with you and help you be successful, make more than it is. And it's great to hear about the number of deals that you're able to provide and that kind of direct help to people who need it the most. Like I said, it's great to see a basketball team get funded or, you know, get our program going. Those are all important. You know, I know that that's an important part of raising a family in town, making sure your kids have a good experience, but, you know, chips are down like they are now, it's even more important to have a little experience for being a student. I think what you're feeling is great. Glad you reached out to me and glad to be able to help out. And I set up the next time as something more, you know, positive and recreational in nature, but, you know, when there's need, we are always here. You guys have always been here for us as a town, for the community. So if there's a need, don't forget to put the phone and keyboard as it is and let us know how we can help. I'm very proud of our association with the folks, with your town, and your needs are our needs. Yeah, thanks for including us and helping us make it happen. And thank you guys all for doing the work that you do to help the people.
Madam Chair, to you and the committee members for any follow-up?
So I want to say thank you. I think one of the things that probably a lot of families and students aren't aware is that they individually have all been impacted by the support of Horizon in some way or another, whether it's through sporting events or, you sort of said, DECA, or now the food program. So we can't thank you enough. It's quite, it's so nice. This was a really important, something that the school committee really talked a lot about was this food program and really continuing to make sure we supported everybody in our community. And stepping up and really offering that financial support is so appreciated. So thank you. Not sure, Sheri, do you have a comment?
I do. Michael, it's great to see you again. You and I have worked together for a number of years and, boy, anytime the ask has been there, you and your family have just been incredible to Norton. And once again, you were there. We needed you and you were there. So it's always great to see you and thank you again for your generosity. It is very much appreciated.
Likewise, great to see you. It's been many years, I mean, since we've seen each other in person.
I know, right?
On the phone all the time, but I did. It's an example of the partnership we have with the town. Couldn't be more happy to be part of what you guys are doing. Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
Michael, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, I just wanted to end. I reached out to you besides coming in for a tour and all that early on when I became superintendent. I reached out to you folks twice, and twice you've made my day. One was recognizing our DECA program and that whole concept of business development and planning and stuff that you guys weren't aware that we were doing with kids and supporting them to go to nationals and representing not only the Commonwealth but Norton and Norton Public Schools. And our kids do well every year, and I know you've been supporting that program every single year with thousands of dollars, and I appreciate that. And then this one is really, really dear to my heart because I think probably one of the things that our families have in common is the idea that when we can, we will, especially with those in need. And so we really do appreciate that you've decided to support us, but more importantly, that you just, I mean, it was a 30-second, 30-minute conversation and 30 seconds into it, it was a yes. So I really appreciate that very much. I can't tell you how much that means. That usually means I won't call you often unless I really need something. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
It feels great to be able to help and thank you guys again for having us and including us in the community. It means a lot to me and my family and everyone who works for us. They know how important it is. They all feel like they're a part of the town, even if they live an hour or an hour and a half away. Tony, I'm sure you guys do. And I hope for this to be all in the future. I certainly hope there won't be another five or six years without someone who we connect. Joe, again, thanks very much and thank you all folks for what you do for us. It means a lot and talk to you soon.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Hello to the family on our behalf.
Absolutely will do. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
We're going to move right on to our, let's see, the vote on the Need memorial bench. So Dr. Byetta?
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Listen, there's no organization that means so much to us, the Need. They've been there all the time. They've been there for us and our students regularly with grants to the classroom directly. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Beatty and Ms. Conway and Ms. Heaney that I believe are here with us tonight on something that's dear to me and recognizing tonight. I'll let them do this, two folks, as part of this. But on a personal note, I was very much connected to one of these two people as the new superintendent when I arrived here in seven, believe it or not, seven years ago now. And just recently was able to support the Blakely family through a very difficult time as we lost Beth and we had our own graduation so that Beth would see her daughter, Vinnie Cersey, was there and a number of staff who volunteered their time. It is a moment in my professional and personal career that I will never forget. There are three or four moments that we all have as administrators in the school system, and I can assure you that that will be one of them. So I'll turn it over to my colleagues in the Need.
Thank you. I should cry now. I've been so emotional. I'm Ms. Conway. Thank you very much for having me and thanks for letting me on so early. I'm the president of Need. I'm here to talk about fabulous Need members who have been special. Beth Blakely was one of the founding members of Need and they started the group of vision of helping our public schools. And we've been doing some amazing things with Beth, Valerie and so on. Beth was always a person who always gave back to her community. She was on every parent board in schools that her children went building. She supported sports and then that wasn't enough for her, so she helped found Need. She was and still is inspiring us to help our community in whatever way we can. We as a group would like to memorialize her dedication by donating an engraved bench and we would love to see it placed outside the auditorium of the high school. Beth had a love and passion for music department as her youngest daughter Caroline is very active in it and she's on the board of music parents as well. We can't speak enough about Beth's sacrifice and dedication to this town and we feel that this small token might help keep her memory alive in town and we would appreciate it.
So Madam Chair, through you, I don't know if either Gina or Susan have any other comments that they would like to make. I know they're on with us and there's some timing issues that I know they have other things to do, but I am absolutely supporting this. I thank you for your patience, Need, the organization for allowing me to allow for the process to take place. I've talked to Wade Lazard, Director of Facilities. We absolutely concur that outside of the auditorium, right to the right side, there's probably a perfect place where you could stand alone and be something that folks could take a look at every time they walk into that part of the building, especially its connection to the arts that folks were very supportive of. So I'm recommending that you accept this dedication and that you vote for it in the affirmative thank you.
So thank you. I am a longtime Norton parent and very familiar with Beth. Beth and I actually were in separate elementary schools. Her family was at LG, my family was at JCS, and we met at the Yell, but didn't realize our daughters had been dancing for a couple of years together prior to that. So I guess we kind of knew each other before that, but I think we can all concur that Beth certainly impacted so many on so many different levels. So I don't know if there's any comments, any discussion from anyone else?
I can vouch that between being on soccer fields with her at many tournaments when there was nothing around but us and the kids, she always was able to pull some kind of goodie out of some bag somewhere that would feed 100 people at least. So I appreciate her baking skills. Also, as president of the parent board for the high school for five years, I can say that anytime anything was needed, she was the first one to step up and help with anything. And I'm sure that the teachers at the high school are going to miss her immensely because of her, again, great cooking skills. Every teacher appreciation breakfast, she always brought in the goodie that was always gone first. So I fully support this and I hope nothing but the best for Need in the future as they have helped us more than we could ever imagine.
There is a question, and I think maybe if you wanted to answer, is there any need for financial donations toward the bench? So perhaps the answer would be to reach out to Need, I guess, is that?
So we have, if you go to our Facebook page, NortonNeed.org, right?
Well, our website would be NortonNeed.org and we have a Facebook page as well.
I'm sorry.
You said Facebook page, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We're there too. We're everywhere. We do have a link in our donation. If anyone wants to make a donation in Beth's honor, you can sort of tag it as such. We do have the funds set aside for Need for the bench and we're very excited to do that for her, but she would love to have donations to Need in her honor since people have done that.
Well, on behalf of Norton Public Schools, we want to just thank you. I think for us parents who have been, I have now a 20-year-old and started with him when he was in kindergarten, being really active. And I think that we've all seen the value of Need and what they've done to support our staff, our students, our families. So we wish you all the best and continue the hard work that got started by two amazing women, a few amazing women, but two that we've lost. So thank you. So do we need to do a vote? Is that how this works, Dr. Byetta, or is there, do we open it to public comment or?
Yeah, you can open to public comment because it is a vote. So at this time, if there's any public comment, we can receive those. I don't know if there is.
I think we answered the one question, so I don't see.
It requires a vote of the school committee.
Perfect. So is there a vote for Need to present a memorial bench in the memory of Beth Blakely to Norton Public Schools?
So moved.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Second.
Thanks, Dan. Any further discussion? Nope. So we will do a roll call. Carolyn Gallagher, yes. Dan Shidi?
Hundred percent yes.
Perfect. Sheri Cohen?
Absolutely yes.
Dina Chavez?
Absolutely.
And Kathleen Stern?
Absolutely yes.
Thank you, Need.
Thank you to Susan. Thank you to Kate and thank you to Gina. I appreciate you folks. Sue, thank you for the emails. I know you didn't speak tonight. You're being shy, I guess, but thank you for reaching out with your email and getting this started on my end and for Kate and Gina for your work as always. And let's keep Beth in a good place with us because she was at Daniel McLady.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And the work you do does not go unnoticed.
Yes.
So thank you.
Joe, before we have the Need folks take off, and Kate, I know you need to run, but are you guys still doing the driveway ends?
Well, Bonnie, you should bring that up. Actually, we just had a meeting yesterday. We are restarting that.
Okay, because I actually wanted to get one last year and I guess it was too late. It's in the winter, but I plan on getting one as soon as this pond gets out of my driveway. And I want to encourage anybody out there who's listening in, it's an easy way to support Need and a great way to make the driveway look super cool. So run out and get a driveway end for Norton Need. And I can reach out to, my neighbor's part of Need right now and I'll reach out to her and set something for you guys to get myself one.
Great. I know Lincoln Lynch wanted one as well.
Yeah, Link Lynch III, who now is a resident of the town of Norton, prior, he's the dad of the former business manager, former retired superintendent. He just reached out to me yesterday and asked about it and I said that I'd bring it up to you guys. So, you know, hey, listen, I think it's, I think the pride of this community is just growing every day and especially the good things that you guys are doing, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the student representative update. So let's see, Caroline is here, Ian Cooper.
Yes.
Caroline and Cooper.
Hi, everyone. That is a tough act to follow. Things have been busier than usual. I know that Brett, before the meeting began being recorded, he was talking about the parade and I'll just talk on that too. It was so amazing. I know I saw a lot of your faces out there and it was such a great way to be celebrated and to celebrate with a lot of our old faculty members and teachers. It was so great to see everyone.
Yeah, after a couple of months of really not seeing many people except for, you know, picking up our robes and dropping things off, it was really nice to see all of the teachers out and to kind of just wave at them and say, you know, we kind of have an actual goodbye, even though I know we'll have graduation, but to actually see all of our teachers, it was really nice and I really appreciated it and thank you to everybody who showed up. We also had the scholarship awards night, which Caroline, great job. I loved the opening.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that was also really well done and really well put together and thank you to everybody who was part of that. I know there are a lot of faces. I recognized a lot of faces, said a lot of that.
And if you watched it all the way to the end, which I hope you did, you got to see Cooper's phenomenal video and thank you, Cooper, for doing that. It was such a great way to have a ton of fond memories, even if you weren't a part of them, getting to see a lot of faces that I haven't seen for a while. It was really, it was amazing.
Thank you.
I just wanted to.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, Ms. Calvin, go ahead. I'll go after you.
I was going to share. So full disclosure, I'm the parent of a senior, so I have sort of been living kind of these events and I can share with you even from a family perspective, they have just really been so heartwarming and just so much fun to be at the parade, so exciting. You know, I'm not sure that I knew what to expect for the awards night and it was just, it was, you know, kind of like a movie night. We were sitting on the couch and we were kind of waiting with anticipation to see who would, whose name would be called. And I think it was such a nice surprise when the picture of the kind of student popped up on the screen. So it was just, I think although not planned and although perhaps not what we had initially expected, your senior year to be like, I do think that these moments have been really, they'll create nice memories, I guess. And I do hope that maybe the parade becomes a tradition because even for the, you know, I actually was sitting, watching all of these kids go by and, you know, my daughter happened to be at the end and I was like so emotional for the whole entire, like, time, kids going by. And they were going kind of quickly. I was surprised. They were kind of moving fast and I couldn't even make out who half the kids were, but it didn't matter. It was just so exciting and it was so much fun. So I hope that you, as seniors and students, sort of enjoyed it as much as perhaps parents, or I'm speaking for myself, but I hope parents did as well, so.
Alan, I, you know, I learned a lot that day. You know, one of the things is my family and I, we came out for, my wife, who's an employee of the district, my daughter was going to be attending Norton High School, and, you know, I can just sit there on the sidelines and saying to myself, oh yeah, this is a new tradition, no doubt about it. If we say no next year, we're going to be, you know, we're going to, we're going to be gone. I mean, it's, there's no doubt that there's something that really plays into it, but I really want to thank Caroline and Cooper, you know, as you're winding down in this role. But, you know, Cooper, the whole idea that you put together that video and just try to really get kids together, I can't, as a former high school teacher and a principal and a coach, I got that, like, it was real, I got connected to it. And as your superintendent, it really speaks volumes to the kind of person that you are, not only a student and all of that, but just the person that you are. So kudos to you. And then Caroline, I mean, one of the hardest things I do every time, and it's probably going to happen again before this is all over, is speak after you because you are such an orator of the, I know you've memorized it, you've practiced it, and I'm looking down and all you can see is maybe the beginning of my balls fall in my head, but it was just so awesome. Your storytelling was, I mean, I can't tell you how often I've rewatched that. It speaks volumes to the character that you are as a young, as a young woman and I know, I know both of you are going to do really well, but it was really hard to just watch two kids that have just done so well. And you guys have, you guys have done something for the school committee that they've never had in the history of the district, and that is not only did you bring a story about what's happening at Norton High School, you actually brought a story about what's happening in all the schools. No one before you had ever done that, that I, and I've gone back and looked at some videos during my time. I, yeah, every once in a while, there'd be a story about the Yell or the JCS or the LGN or the middle school. You guys made sure that your report every other week made a comment about all of the kids and all of the good things happening in the district. Kudos to the two of you for doing that. And thank you for your service to the school committee over the last few years. I know that these meetings are really, really exciting. So thanks. And so filling your shoes in the future are two folks of who I know from afar, one a little closer than the other. We have Malia Savas, who's going to be joining us. She is an incoming grade 10 student, a current ninth grader. Yes, she is related to the school committee member and we are so sorry for that, Malia. Hopefully you'll be able to control them because we haven't been able to do that for the last seven years.
Still figuring.
And then.
I just have one question for her. Does she also think that waffles are overrated? Is this a conversation you guys have had?
Yes, we talk about waffles during meetings.
We said the meeting's very exciting, Malia.
Our second new, our second new colleague, and I want to make sure I say this right, is Zoe Duran, who is currently a incoming 11th grader junior. So it means Zoe. Hi, Zoe, how are you?
Hi.
Good to see you. Thanks for joining us. Thanks for taking this lead. I know you guys got big shoes to follow, but I know you're going to do a great job and we appreciate it very much. And there's the potential you're going to be with us for the next couple of years, which I think is great. Some continuity is always, is always a good thing. So welcome to the school committee. Anytime you need something, Malia tells Dad this is what you need. He can usually get you some votes and then we can get it done. I'm just kidding.
She tells me all the time, trust me.
Call me out. You don't need to do that. It's rude.
Welcome to the school committee. Maybe we need to figure out how to make these meetings a little bit more fun. I don't know. Sometimes they can be a little long, but I do have to say, for me, the student update is always the best part of our meeting because I think that's why we're all here. We're all here to support the students who are part of our school system and to really see what is happening and to be able to experience all of the events and the successes of individual schools was really the best part of the work that we do. So Caroline and Cooper started that and I'm sure Malia and Zoe, you'll continue that sort of, I guess, that new tradition of really being the voice for all of the students at Norton Public Schools. So welcome. And I guess we'll be getting back to in-person meetings at some point. I don't know when. And then we can formally sort of introduce ourselves to both of you, but it's a pleasure to have you join us. And Caroline and Cooper, it's going to be sad to see you go, but you're off to such great things. I'm sure we all wish you so much luck and best wishes in college to pretty amazing universities that you're going to. So best wishes for just a super exciting future, so.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say too that, oh, sorry, Sheri, go ahead.
That's okay. I just wanted to say, Joe, I was glad to hear you say the car parade was going to be a new tradition because I think that's a great way to circle in the whole community to celebrate our senior class. So I was happy to hear you already say that. And as you all know, I tend to be the crier in the group. So last weekend between Cooper, your video, which was incredible, Caroline, your speeches during class night and the car parade, I did not stop crying the entire weekend and I don't even have a senior. You guys did an amazing job. You've been great to watch. You've been, you know, just so helpful in updating us, like Caroline has said. It's been a pleasure to really get to know you guys and I wish you nothing but the best in the future and I hope you guys pop in every once in a while to say hi to us. And Malia and Zoe, can't wait to see you guys sitting at our table and filling us in as well. Thank you, guys.
Madam Chair, through you, just to let you know, both Cooper and Caroline, we do have on behalf of the school committee in my office, a very small token that will be coming your way in the very near future. So didn't want you to think that there isn't just a little something that maybe will keep you reminding yourself about MPS and AHS. So thank you so much. And I'd also like to announce that I know the two of you are very heavily involved in Caroline, especially as the leader of the class of 2020. After very little deliberation, I know that the class of 2020 would like to make sure that they're seated together for graduation. And so I'm happy to announce tonight that that will happen on July 25th. We are going to have you guys together to be onstage. We're working on a bunch of different things, thanks to Wade Lazard and Ethan Dollman, our principal. We walked the premises the other day and we're really excited about the 25th of July. I think it's going to be potentially a new tradition as well.
I just want to say thanks to Cooper and Caroline and congratulations on everything and we really appreciate you giving us all the information on the schools, as I've said before, and not just the high schools. So we really appreciate that. And also congratulations and welcome to Malia and Zoe.
So any other comments, Cooper? Caroline?
Yeah, I'd just like to take this time to thank all of you, all the members of the school committee, Dr. Byetta, Mr. Cersey, and also just all my teachers that I've had over the years. I've just had some great years and amazing times here in Norton and in the public school system and it wouldn't have been possible without any of you. Like, I don't know, I feel like I'm, I don't know, it's, it is, you know, a little heartbreaking to be leaving all of you and like, I'm definitely going to be back at some point and, you know, going to run around and say hi to everybody and I'll definitely be giving out hugs. But yeah, I just thank you to everybody. A lot of what I accomplished, I wouldn't have been possible without all of you helping me, so thank you.
NYU and BC, that's not bad for two kids out of Norton, Massachusetts. I'll leave it at that. Good, Caroline.
We'd have done it without you guys. Everything that Cooper said, Norton was a phenomenal place to grow up. I'll say it a million times because of the community that you guys are and all of the teachers and the school and whenever anything got tough, and it has been tough the past couple of months, the focus went right to the students and the priority to the students and we can't be any more grateful for you guys and the tough decisions you had to make, but you've made them so easily because you just knew what was best for us, what was best, and we appreciate that so much. And good luck to you too. I'm so excited to see two ladies. I came in with two guys before me and now girl power. I love to see their representation and yeah, this is, it's really cool. You got to peek behind the curtain, see all the hard work that goes into the decisions we hear about all the time, so good luck, you guys. And thank you all for everything.
Hey, guys, just really quickly, I want to thank Cooper and Caroline. So I've been on the school committee the longest of everybody here and I want to say, and I do not say this lightly, and I don't say this with any disrespect to anybody who preceded you, but without a doubt, you guys were the best student reps we've had. I got to tell you that. And again, I don't say it lightly, so thank you both very much. I don't see how anybody can follow the lead you set up this plan. It's whoever comes next, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a flop in my opinion, so. No, really, I'm absolutely kidding you. And Sheri.
I also just want to take the time.
Sheri, just so you know, I cry too, but it's when we talk about the budget, so.
Caroline and Cooper already have me crying again tonight, so thanks, guys.
No, I also just want to say congratulations to Caroline and Cooper. Wish you the best of luck.
No, I, I also just wanna say congratulations to Caroline and Cooper. Um, wish you the best of luck. Uh, I'm closely, you know, close second to Dinesh in years here, and, uh, I do second what he was saying about, uh, having the, you know, the best representation was the two of you, in my opinion. Um, it, it's, as your kids get older, you kind of forget what the other schools are doing. Uh, so it was nice to hear the events at the other schools that we don't have kids in, uh, and, and see the different things that are going on and hear about the things that are going on. So, um, congratulations to you two, wish you the best of luck. Uh, welcome to Zoe and Malia. Uh, we look forward to working with you. And, uh, thanks again.
Any other comments? Well, best of luck, guys. We will see you on July 25th.
See you guys. So much, looking forward to it.
We are too. We're so excited. So, and Zoe and Malia, welcome. And we will see you, um, at our next meeting. Is, do they start with us? Or do they get the summer off? Or how does that work? You're muted, Dr. Byetta.
That never happens.
I know. There you are.
Wow, that never happens. Um, and everybody else is laughing on my team. Good night, everybody. Um, they will start on the 25th of June, our next meeting.
Perfect. We will see you on the 25th of June, Malia and Zoe. So, um, you're welcome to stay on with us right now, just to see how things go. And Cooper and Caroline, we will, um, miss you at our next meeting, but we'll see you soon. Thanks for everything. Um, so we're gonna move on to the update on the extended school year program. Mrs. Sullivan?
Good evening, everybody. And Cooper and Caroline, congratulations. I'm really happy for, for both of you. So I provided a memo through Dr. Byetta's to you, for you, um, regarding our extended school year program. This is the program that we run every year, um, and it's for our students on I E Ps who have been found eligible, um, for this program by their educational teams based on their, um, risk of substantial regression. And that's determined through, um, looking at their students' performance and what they retain from the previous summer coming into the school year over, um, school vacations, long weekends, things like that. Um, and this year we have kind of quite a bit of data given the school closures. And normally when we organize the extended school year program, it's not a problem. It's pretty easy. We know exactly who should go where. Um, but given the school closures, um, we've been waiting and waiting for guidance from the Department of Education. Um, and we finally got the guidance on Sunday evening, um, on June 7th. And that's very late. Normally we have the program organized, done, parents are notified, um, teachers know, um, that they're working and who they're working with, so they can be prepared for the program. So, um, Vinnie and I had worked together over the past few weeks prior to receiving the guidance and organized a remote, um, remote extended school year program. And so the guidance that we got on Sunday indicated that we should, we should consider in-person services for our most, most needy, most needy students. And, um, so we should consider in-person services for our most needy students. And that's really hard to say because we're being asked to choose who our most needy students are out of our students, all of our students with disabilities that are already receiving services. And within that guidance, there's a whole lot of, um, expectations for things that we would need to put in place in order to have in-person services. Things like, um, a significant amount of protective equipment, training for staff, um, reorganizing classroom spaces so that we can maintain social distancing, all of those kinds of things. So after considering all of that, at this point, to start the summer, we feel that it's really important to continue with the remote learning program. And then if we're able later on in the summer to consider bringing students in for things like therapies, um, and, um, also potentially to work on our backlog of evaluations that, um, weren't able to be conducted over the summer. So as part of our remote learning program, we've really beefed up what we've been providing all spring. And we are focusing on, um, typically our program runs three days a week for four hours a day. So we're focusing on those three days, Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays from eight to noon. And students will be involved in a range of different activities. There'll be a morning meeting. There'll be some remote learning activities that will include individual sessions with teachers or paraprofessional and some independent learning. There'll be some daily, a daily small group activity. And, um, those will be run by either a teacher or a paraprofessional, and they'll flip. So students will have equal opportunity and access to both staff. Um, and then we're gonna provide, um, some health lessons. We're gonna use one of our school nurses to, to check in with families and make sure that students are doing well and ready to prep, find out what they need in order to come back to school in the fall, given additional guidance. And also we'll run some health lessons to help students be prepared for coming back to school. Thing, focusing on things like wearing masks, how you wear your mask, how staff might look different when we come back to school, um, how your classrooms are gonna look different when we come back to school, hand washing, um, social distancing, all those kinds of things, um, which are gonna be really important because I think some of our students, when they see that our classrooms and our staff might be wearing different things, um, are gonna be very uncomfortable with that. We're gonna alternate those health lessons with some O T, um, lessons with our certified O T assistant. Um, and those will be things like, um, sensory activities, um, maybe a craft, something like that, that's related to the theme for the week. Um, and then once a week, the classroom teachers will run either a social activity or a story or something like that that follows along with the theme. So it's, it's, um, very similar in nature to what we'd be running in person. It's just gonna be remote. Um, and hopefully over time, we'll be able to, um, find opportunities for students to access our buildings. I know that, um, in looking at it, we've staffed each, we have about 10 classes full of students, which are about eight to 11 students in each classroom, a teacher and a paraprofessional. And in some cases with our bigger groups that are more in the 11 range, we have two paraprofessionals with that group, so we can break them into small groups. Um, we have about 50 students that require tutoring sessions. And we have several students who also require therapy services. Um, so we have all of that in place. We are, in terms of the budget, we are, um, because we're going remote, we're not, unfortunately not able to hire all of our high school students and college students and additional paraprofessionals that we typically hire. So we are, um, saving between $6,000 and $8,000 based on what we've provided over last year. So that's kind of the update. I don't know what questions you might have.
Jean, how quick do you think you're gonna be able to get students in?
It's really hard to say at this point. Um, one, we're not sure parents want, want to come in, um, want their kids to come. And based on the survey that we provided, there aren't too many parents that, that are looking for that. And really it's about access to our buildings. So working with Wade and Dr. Byetta around, in the Board of Health, around access to the buildings, um, being able to set up the classrooms the way we need them to, um, training staff on protocols in terms of toileting, restraints, um, you know, basically interacting with students if you have to come more than six feet close to them, um, those kinds of things. So there are a lot of things that need to, need to be in place. And the other factor is that, um, we don't yet have guidance on transportation. So what the Department of Ed has recommended is that we reach out to families and see if they're willing to provide the transportation. And, um, we're just, we're not there yet.
Jean, can you give me a, a sense of the cost for the program like this and maybe, uh, is it comparable to a normal E S Y program?
It's about what we figured out, um, for staffing, um, we're about eighty, eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, and last year we spent about ninety-three.
Dinesh, to your, to your question, um, as, as was noted earlier by Jean, part of the small savings that you see there is really in the idea of some of our students not being typically utilized, or I should say, uh, young adults being utilized as assistants in the classroom and so on. So, um, the biggest concern that we all have here is, um, the memo that came out Sunday. Well, we had one on Friday and then one on Sunday. Um, as Jean knows, the biggest concern that we have is this, this idea of choosing our most vulnerable students. I have a significant ethical issue with that concept because these are students who have a federal contract between the family and the district on providing services under an I E P. And to further choose students from within that group, to me, is a real question of, I, I actually think it's a legal question, to be quite honest. And I've said this to both Vinnie and the incoming director and Jean. And I think there's an issue here of, of, uh, I'm, I'm never able to choose anything under I E P. Well, why all of a sudden am I able to under E S Y? Um, no, shouldn't we? I mean, it's an agreed document that we, the district, through a process, agreed to with the family. And I'll say that X, Y, Z students are gonna get something, but A, B, C students aren't. To me, doesn't make any sense.
So Joe, you bring up a good, a good question. If, if this is how they're proposing we, we move forward, is this on a health harmless basis? And if we, if we have lawsuits coming from people who are, were not chosen as the, the media, I mean, what's, what's our exposure there?
So I think every school district, uh, is gonna have an exposure during this entire March 16th and to now and into E S Y. And then whatever decision, as we know, we've been going back and forth with all kinds of communication about what the fall's gonna look like. The biggest issue here is our constant willingness to move forward and improve on a regular basis, which Jean has done a really good job with, which is to take the biggest guidance and say, this is how we can meet it. Now, we could have a family that absolutely challenges that. Um, we could have, we have families who might challenge it in the opposite, where we say, no, you're coming in. And they say, no, I'm not coming in. My child has a significant health issue and also has a learning disability, but I refuse to send them in until A, B, C happens, such as, you know, there's no longer a state of emergency or the numbers are at a point where they're much better. So I do think at this time that every school district in the Commonwealth and nationally is prone to any type of, um, a liability situation. But I also think that what we're doing is we're saying that if a student has E S Y services, that we're trying to provide it in the best and safest way that we can for all students in an E S Y. And to me, that, that is, uh, I'm not sure it protects us, for lack of a better phrase, but I do think that it, it, at least within our framework, allows for us to say that we are trying our best for all students, not a student.
And I think, just to add to that, I think, as Dr. Byetta said, I think the important thing is that we can show from, from middle, mid-March to now, that we've constantly increased what we've been providing to students. And so we have some good data and some good evidence to say that we've continued to improve in terms of what we've been able to provide to kids. Uh, and now pretty much we're gonna provide what they would have gotten in the classroom, just in a different way.
And to Jean's point too, this is subject to change on a weekly basis. I mean, the fact of the matter is that some of this stuff might be working perfectly, and then the next week we have to change it because it's not working, because the student's not showing up, doesn't wanna come, parents don't want it, or the, the program that we're, what we put in place isn't working the way we think it should be working. And we have to change people, or we have to add people, or we have to delete people, or whatever the case may be. So it'll be a lot more fluid than it typically is.
I also think that, um, to Kathleen's question earlier about when we'd be able to bring students back, I think as we continue to get more guidance about what the fall will look like, I think that's gonna help us make those decisions. We still don't know, and it doesn't really feel very comfortable to be using our students with disabilities to, to try to figure that out. And I know we need to be uncomfortable in this situation and be uncomfortable to, to improve and get better, but I think we need to know more what the big picture is gonna look like.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Jean even from hearing the, being in some of those webinars and, you know, what those health and safety protocols were, they, they, it wasn't really well spelled out. So those still have to be developed, I, I think, both at the state level and the local level, um, before we start to, to move forward to an in-person model. And I think from what I've seen and heard, that, that's many districts or most districts are dealing that same way.
Vinnie, when is potentially that going to be more defined by the state? Is there kind of an expectation? Uh, has anyone said by a certain date? No. And it's the expectation that individual districts will just be doing this on their own, kind of making their own decisions, is that, it's, it's interesting because Rhode Island announced that they will be going back in September. Um, and I was wondering, you know, if their Department of Education is similar to Massachusetts, you know, do they have a Department of Education that has defined it so well for Rhode Island that they know that they can do this? Or are they doing it individually? Like, I'm just intrigued because I do know that Desi really hasn't put out a lot, um, of guidance yet for getting back in the fall.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. Jean, do you know more about?
Well, we've heard to, to this point, and I think Dr. Byetta and Jen can speak to this also, is that sometime next week, um, it sounds like they're gonna release the preliminary guidance. But again, it's not super clear. I mean, we didn't think, we weren't sure when the guidance for extended school year was coming out, and it fell in my mailbox on Sunday night at six o'clock. Um, we'd had a conference call on Friday and it was coming sometime later in the week, and it showed up Sunday night.
Jean, to your point in your comment right there, what's really important is that the, the prior commentary was very much a, you will open up. And then all of a sudden, it's more of a, you should consider this, but it's a local control decision. So, um, I think we're gonna hear a lot more about that, which, to be quite honest, what I'm hearing about the fall in the last, uh, twenty-four to seventy-two hours is that there's more of a potential that we're opening up in some way in the fall, more likely than just a hybrid model. Because there is no way that, that people think that the education system in the Commonwealth over the last three months is the same of what it really is as a public education system, which is the number one in the nation. Uh, forget the test results, just take a look at where students are going to college, workplace and on the military. It's the highest of the 50 states. It flip flops between us and, and two other states. We're either one, two or three, depending on the year. So, um, uh, and, and that's the concern here is that, um, I've been, as, as my team knows, I've been pretty critical and vocal, um, about this. I've decided to kind of quiet down in the last few weeks about it because I don't see a move in their direction. Um, and to be quite honest, we're also very independent, right? We have two committees at every level who are the local governing body. So unless this is done legislatively, um, I think a recommendation from the commissioner is exactly that. It's a recommendation.
Yeah, Caroline, even regarding our most vulnerable students, I mean, there wasn't any kind of real guidance around what that meant in terms of service delivery, disability, number of hours that they would require. It, it really was sort of, well, you have conversations with, in, in, within your district and with your parents, and you guys decide at that level.
Got it. I think it's just really, I, I think, and, and we know there's so many unknowns, so I, I understand that. But, um, it's hard to look at kind of what this is and to work with vulnerable students, to work with families, to really not have some sort of direction. Um, it, it's definitely a difficult situation. So on behalf of the school committee, thank you to all of you who are, who are doing this every day, trying to come up with really the best scenario for kind of a, a really difficult situation, so. Are there any other comments, Jean? Thank you so much. And I think Jean, you'll be with us, um, for our next meeting, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure there were no more goodbyes tonight. So, um, any other comments? Discussion? No. Well, thank you so much. Keep us posted.
Thank you.
Good luck. Let's see, reopening of school steering committee membership, Dr. Byetta?
Ms. Gallagher, thank you. I just wanted to inform the committee of the membership and apologize to Mr. Lazard and Mr. Wells, who did not get my, uh, request to attend last night's meeting. My apologies to them publicly. Um, it was definitely my fault, no one else's. Um, I wanna make sure that, um, uh, the committee had an understanding of the folks that are on there. We have two parents. We're gonna add, be adding a REEDS collaborative and potentially a BICO collaborative as well, two students. Two student representatives will be selected. Ms. Taylor is on there from the NTA, Mike Rukaro from Food Services, Allison Toskas, guidance counselor at the middle school, and Victoria Trotman, elementary teacher at the Yale, representing the staff, Bob Malauer, as well as a staff member and dean of students, Ronnie Goldstein and Aaron Sumner, Jake Dennett, the SRO, Sergeant Dennett, excuse me, Kathleen Stern representing the school committee, Wade and Matt, Erin, Vinnie and Jen, and myself, representing the central office. We had a great first meeting, just a general overview. Once we know something from the state, the triangulation, if you will, will be, we'll have subcommittees working on options, if that's something that we have to do. We'll have a safety committee, will consist of the Board of Health, the five school nurses at my office only. Those folks are looking at this totally from a safety component only. And then the last recommendation, Marty, to you, the school committee, if that's the process, will be this steering committee. And then you folks will take the final vote on the recommendations that's provided to you as an option. So I wanted, I just want to thank the working committee. We had our first meeting, it went really well. It was positive. Everybody needs to be on the same page. And that's about it on that.
I know the next meeting Wednesday night, I will not be able to attend, so do you want one of the other school committees to jump on?
No, that's fine. No, we didn't do any, any, so this year, we'll just bring you up to date as things come. I mean, as I said, I'll send out information on Monday with the Wednesday meeting, plus, as I said, documents for people to read. I have a bunch of different documents from various sources about how to open, what are some of the flaws, the issues, and all of that. And hopefully by then, we'll have a recommendation.
Well, thanks to everybody who is really taking time to look at all options moving forward, so. Any other discussion, comments?
I just have one quick question. What's the timeframe on the recommendation? Like, what's the, what's the timeframe on the committee's meeting and the recommendations?
Right, Dan, great question. So the question's going to be, how does the state release this to us? Do they tell us this is what we're doing? Or are we providing options within the telling, or, or just, this is what you're doing? And I think there's going to be a lot of pushback on that, on how that happens, because as you know, you know, legislatively, there's, there's decisions that can be made, but otherwise, it really belongs to the local level. So the question will be, if we're on a staggered opening, are we, are we able to define what that means? Or does that mean the state's defining it for us? So we don't know. I would say that a final recommendation to the school committee will probably be coming sometime in late July, or maybe even mid-July to late July, in terms of this is what we're doing, and then in August, this is the specifics of what we're doing.
Update and vote on athletic complex for the town meeting article, Dr. Byetta?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the reason why this is on here, because this has caused a little, little public relations issues, the reason why this is on here, you've already voted an option. However, you've also voted and moved forward articles. So your vote tonight is to consider to withdraw the article for the June town meeting. That's already happened, it's my understanding, with the senior center and the town hall. So my recommendation, as you know, we've pushed that this be a one-question ballot for both the town hall, or all three items, I should say. So because you're the maker of the article, in order for an article to be withdrawn, it has to be withdrawn by the maker of the article. You're the maker of the article, so therefore, the recommendation is, is to withdraw to a, to the next town meeting, and/or to an agreement between you folks and the board of selectmen on how this is going to go forward.
So if we withdraw, that gets rid of the whole article? Like, are we, we'd have to go through all of this again to get all three on an article again?
That is correct. So right, right now, the article would go forward to the town meeting on June 27th. If you don't withdraw it, if you withdraw it, then you're joining the selectmen in withdrawing of the entire, of your portion of the article.
Just, just to clarify, so withdrawing the article doesn't, doesn't vacate all the work we've done on it?
That is correct.
And the plan still sits in place, we're just, we're just deferring it to the fall meeting. So, you know, I don't want, I don't want to make this sound like it's, it's more than it is.
Yeah, you're, you're withdrawing the article for the purposes of, in this particular case, the current financial situation, and to take it up at a later date, whatever decision that is of the school committee, independent from any other board, or with and in conjunction with other boards.
Right. And my, my thought process on this is that we should, we should essentially follow the lead of the select board. Quite frankly, I think the idea that we had two independent options coming forward was suboptimal at best. So maybe, maybe this gives us an opportunity in the fall to, to put them together as one article, as they showed in the first place.
Right. So, Dinesh, to your comment, you can motion tonight to withdraw and to join the board of selectmen for a future article on this, on this issue.
Can, can we vote to join them? I mean, it would have to be a, would have to be a joint vote?
Yeah, so you're the original maker of the article that was sent forward and held as a town hall, senior center, and athletic complex. If you remember correctly, we were the ones who moved that forward. And so you're withdrawing that article at this time, based upon also the board of selectmen has withdrawn it, because it's not the right time.
Okay.
Do we have confirmation they withdrew theirs, or are they doing theirs tonight as well? Because I believe I read that they were setting the articles for town meeting. I just, I just want to get, you know, I'm thinking anything nefarious is going on, but I'm just, I'm a little bit more at ease if I knew they were definitely withdrawing as we are, but.
So, so they, they can make a change to any of their votes as they go forward in the article process to the warrant, but it's my understanding that that took a place left.
Jack, Jack Conway from the select board did send us a message saying that they voted last week to move it to the October town meeting.
Okay. Fair enough.
It does require a vote, Madam Chair.
Sure. So, is it a vote just to?
Withdraw the article.
Withdraw the article. Do we have to then save to move it to the fall, or just withdraw the article?
You just withdraw the article. You can always bring up, you have a different process for the fall, so you restart the entire process. So you're withdrawing the article for the purposes of the June town meeting.
Okay.
Or the, or the FY twenty-one town meeting, as currently published.
So is there a vote to withdraw the article on the athletic complex for the FY twenty-one town meeting?
So move.
Second?
Thanks, Sheri. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. So Carolyn Gallagher? Aye. Dinesh Chavez?
Yes.
Sheri Cohen?
Yes.
Kathleen Stern?
Yes.
Dan Shidi?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Recommendation and vote on FY twenty-one fees? Mr. Wells?
Yes. So what we've provided to you in the packet is a list of our fee-based programs, what the current fee is for each of the programs, what a maintenance fee would be, increase would be, and then we're recommending that we remain level on all the fees and not have an increase. I know that we wanted to try and decrease fees this year, but it's kind of a difficult budget year to do that. We still don't really know where chapter seventy and circuit breaker are going to be coming in. We won't find out that until August, so we think that keeping the fees level at this time is probably the best option moving forward.
Madam Chair, through you, I just want to piggyback on, on Mr. Wells' comments. One of the ones that we have, we're going to have to relook throughout the summer is the Little Lancers preschool. And, and part of that becomes, if it is in fact remote, I think we're going to have an incredibly difficult time, having people pay three to four hundred dollars a month for remote. So that's, I just want you to know that we're, we're asking to keep everything as is, but that does, your vote does not mean that we won't be coming in the future to potentially make other changes, per Matt and my discussion. That is just, you know, we, we had a, a survey done by Anne Marie Baker, who's the assistant principal of early childhood coordinator, and she had twenty-six or forty-four prospective adult families respond, and clearly, if you're going to charge them the same you're doing now for remote, the numbers dwindle down into fifteen to twenty percent will participate. And so that becomes a huge issue, because remember that the model for the Little Lancers preschool is that it is grounded legally under special education, but as a model, it is about, it is about having peer-alike students involved who will pay tuition to attend. So I just want you to keep that in mind, that your vote does not change any of that tonight, but we're also very understanding that these fees could completely change depending on what happens for the fall. You can't charge somebody twenty-five dollars to park somewhere if you're not coming to work. You're not coming to school.
Is there any chance that, for example, that we potentially come back to school in September, but it isn't appropriate for preschool, or is it sort of an all or nothing, or?
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great question, Carolyn. Right now, it's, it's, we're mandated to have a preschool program, so that'll be the question. What does it look like?
Okay.
What options do we have? We have been told right now that in order to have a preschool program, that it's a, it's a required model preschool program that we have here as, as part of that. That could change. I don't know how it would change, but if you remember, these original, these programs originally started as direct special education services, and then they grew into, you know, defining what the appropriate program would be for all students. So it's going to be a very interesting, another, another very interesting discussion about the future.
Sure.
This does require a vote.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? So based on the spreadsheet that you sent us, you just, you just added in the new fee with a maintenance increase, just for us to see it?
Yes.
Without doing anything with it?
No, we are not doing that. We were recommending just keeping them flat.
That makes me very happy.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm less happy, quite honestly. So, as you guys know, I've been discussing for a while now, and the initiative for this year was really to kind of, to try and bring these fees in a little bit. I, I get the narrative that, hey, it's a tough year, pandemic, quarantine, et cetera. I'm, I'm not so sure I'm, I'm buying that narrative as a reason to abandon this. While it's, while it's a tough year, it's, it's as tough as other years have been. Quite frankly, I've seen tougher. You know, so I'm, I'm kind of curious, refresh my memory, on the high school athletics, do we have a cap now?
We do not.
We do not? Okay. Matt, you've, you've run numbers on the, on these fees, and what it would look like if we were to discount them by, by some number, or to put a cap on them?
Yes, let's say, so let's start with athletics. For every ten dollar increase, a decrease in the athletic fee, we have to move ten thousand dollars worth of expenses to the appropriation budget to support.
All right, so ten bucks equals ten thousand?
Yeah.
All right. And is that, is that generally true in the other, like transportation?
Transportation, it's, it's about five thousand dollars for every ten dollars.
All right.
Clubs and activities, every ten dollar increase is about six grand. And then Little Lancers has a variable fee, but.
But Little Lancers, we should, we should probably just table that, because we're not sure what's in there, so. All right, so, and what about caps? What if we were to cap it at, at two, you know, twice, twice whatever the fee is? So transportation, if we capped it at three seventy, athletics capped it at three seventy for a family, what does that do to us?
So.
If you don't understand it, that's okay.
I, I have to, I have to, that's a little more detail, I have to run that on the specific, based on our historic. But we, we did run some different models, and we did talk about a capping scenario. I can't remember exactly what the amount was, but we were looking at, with the capping scenario, it was probably about a hundred thousand dollars, they had to move back to appropriations.
Capping it for, where did you cap it at, to get that number?
I think we capped it at two seasons.
Okay.
If I'm remembering correctly.
All right, two hits, two hits per family, and two hits per family, and then it costs us a hundred thousand? Is that right?
Yeah, then we'd have to transition back, yeah, yeah.
Wow, that seems likely. That seems likely.
I, I, I would, you know, a couple of different things here. One is when you look at transportation, remember that your charge is on pay and ride, which is a, a benefit that you provide. If we're at every other student, every other seat type of concept, you may not be providing any pay and ride, period.
Right. I'm, I'm making the assumption that we're back in school on a normal basis next year, and we've had this discussion as well. I don't see how financially anything else is going to work, quite frankly. But, but you're, you're absolutely right, Joe. If, if that's the, if that's the mandate, then yeah, there is no possibility, so it's not relevant.
So the question, so the question becomes, what is the amount of money that, for, for the purposes of capping athletics or camping transportation are two biggest activity ones, if you will, in terms of do or die for families? And then where does the money come from within the operating budget? You know, is it, is it, and that's the key. And I would rather say to you folks that you consider a vote of no fee increases, and that you're going to reconsider this, depending on what the budget looks like, you can reconsider it again. It might not look like, and equals six thousand for clubs, and ten dollars per student is ten K for athletics.
Joe, can you, can you repeat that? I didn't catch that.
I said, you, you can vote on this tonight and reconsider it again, based upon changes to the budget, either to the negative or to the positive. Right? In other words, what this does is allows for us to start putting things into play, but it doesn't stop you later on from making a change to it, i.e. going to the October town meeting and saying, we're requesting a hundred thousand dollars because we have, you know, twelve hundred families that are killing themselves to try to pay this amount of money for the third child, or the third sport, or for the, whatever the case may be.
Joe, I agree, because I think, you know, I'm, I'm happy that we're not increasing anything because of the budget, but I, I think it's hard, you know, listen, I know that we were all hoping that we could decrease some of our fees for this upcoming year, but I think with, you know, the budget's so uncertain, and us unfortunately having to lay off a few teachers, it's, it's hard to make those kind of changes when we are having some layoffs and we don't know what is coming. So I think to keep it kind of status quo for right now, I don't know, in my head, that's what makes sense. I just didn't want to see it increase, because I think that is, is hard for, for families in dealing what we're, we're dealing with right now.
Is it, is this kind of conversation related to what we're talking about next, Matt, which is the FY twenty-one, one-twelve budget? I mean, you know, does that play into that at all? I guess I sort of think that I'm kind of like-minded with Sheri as well, that I would not want to see increases at all. I would hope that we could kind of go back to what we've been talking about for years, which is to try to reduce our fees in some way. So is that our best option? Do you think that we, you know, I don't know, Kathleen or Dan, Dinesh, if you have thoughts, is it our best option to vote to keep the fees as is, but with the option of reconsideration? Is that what you suggested, Dr. Byetta?
Yeah, and the reason is, I, I don't know, listen, a few years ago, our budget was so bad that we were thinking about eliminating athletics completely, or charging a per-use athletic program. Those discussions could be for every two, I keep telling everybody, for every two, you need a third, in order to make up the cost on the town side to a balanced budget of unemployment. So this allows for us to stay stable, but by the way, none of these line items, none of these line items are costing us less next year. In other words, you're absorbing, you're already absorbing costs in the budget for these. And I'll give you an example. Correct me if I'm wrong, the transportation is up somewhere between thirty and thirty-five thousand dollars as a contract for next year, just general, the yellow bus. So in other words, our contract, our contract at two percent increase for next year is costing us a flat thirty-five. That thirty-five is already on the operating budget, not being asked of for people to pay more. Athletics is at least one percent, probably more than that, because of things that are beyond stipends. Clubs, parking is flat, middle school athletics, same thing, that would go up, clubs, flat, elementary clubs, flat, Little Lancers is going to go up. Why? Because Little Lancers is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the, in collective fees. If we don't collect two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in collective fees this fall, we have to find two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, because we still have the staff providing mandated services to students. So I hate these fees, you guys, I say it all the time, we're number one in the fee business here in Norton, but at the end of the day, we're already absorbing very close business here in Norton, but at the end of the day, we're already absorbing very close to six figures in the operating budget in increases for these specific line items. Again, reconsider it depending on what the budget looks like. Try to cut a deal um that allows for us to say that we're gonna save every family a hundred and fifty dollars because, you know, of athletics, or the third sport is free, or this third child goes on the bus for free, or this, or the second child goes for two fifty instead of three fifty, and you're saving a hundred dollars.
Yeah, I, I, I get the argument. Um, one thing I would say is, with respect to the Little Lancers, if, if we're not collecting fees, it doesn't matter if the fee is, you know, two thousand dollars or ten cents, uh, if, if we're not collecting anything, we're not collecting anything, so we're gonna take that hit regardless. Um, I think the, my, my issue with the, the fees, particularly sports, transportation, et cetera, um, you know, Little Lancers less so because we're providing a service um that, that is not part of our, or was not part of our traditional school system over the years. With respect to the other fees though, you know, I've said this before, I'll say it again, it's nothing more than a de facto tax on the, on, on some of our citizens, and those citizens are the parents of our students. I don't think it's fair, you know? I, I, I get the reaction out for, for doing it, I get the, I get the, the budget holes it creates. I, I'm, I'm just not sure that I'm willing to continue to say, well, those guys are gonna suck up the cost because the town's not willing to. And I get it, this isn't, you know, this isn't a situation where, well, the town's hiding any money, I don't think it is. Um, but, you know, we all, we all know where we've been in the last few years, we went through a couple of overrides, and we keep saying no. And what that results is, we come back to our parents and say, okay, well, town didn't stand up and, and pass an override, so we gotta charge you guys more fees. I'm not for it, I'm simply not for it, you know? Um, and, and with respect to, you know, it, it being a hit, I, I mean, I get it, and, and quite honestly, yeah, Joe, you're right. Not that many years ago, we were talking about pay-to-play. Listen, everybody here who was, who was on the school committee at that time or, or in the administration at that time knows, the only reason that that didn't come through was because of school choice. You know, we're still kinda living on that school choice time, quite frankly. And, and I get it, I, I do, I mean, trust me when I say it, nobody gets it more than me, maybe, maybe Matt and Joe do, but, but I understand the budget, I understand where we're at very well. Uh, but, but from a principal standpoint, I just, I'm, I'm sick and tired of charging our, our, our parents the highest fees in the state. It's, it's unconscionable, quite frankly.
Dines, can I just comment on that? Because I agree with you, it is frustrating that we have to keep putting this on the parents, but I just have to remind you that unfortunately, um, you know, our school parents don't, they, they, they're not angry enough yet because they don't come out enough to vote yes for an override.
Yeah, that's a fair point.
Yeah, so they have the opportunity to help us reduce these fees, and it just hasn't happened yet. I mean, we continue to say the same thing over and over again, so I just kinda wanna point that out.
No, you're absolutely right, that's, that, that is a very fair point.
Well, and I, I do think too that the Little Lancer program is a little different than some of our other fees, only because it, it is a preschool. Um, I know I paid when my kids were little, even though there were no other fees at the time, it's almost like a tuition. Um, are there any local um schools in the area that have free preschool?
No, they're all tuition, they, the, the, our program's all, is all tuition-based, yeah.
So that's all I would say is that, you know, Little Lancers is kind of its own animal, it's, it's not like a bus fee or an athletic fee.
And I think, um, you know, just to sort of, to get back on what Sherri said, and I think it's really true, um, nobody has worked harder, I think, in, in years um than some of us on the school committee, or, or all of us on the school committee, but so many parents in our community really trying to get the vote for an override, and we've had many attempts, so um, I agree, Dines, I hate fees as well, um, but until people come out and vote, I don't know um if we can avoid it. So I, I think I would make the suggestion, if the school committee um supports, that we will vote to um keep the FY twenty-one fees as is with the opportunity for reconsideration, is that how I would say that? Do I have to say that?
I, I think we always have the opportunity to.
We always have it, do I have to say that?
Right, all this does is, so that you know, Carolyn, all this does is, is for July one, it establishes the business office to move forward.
Okay. Any other discussion? Why don't we then um consider a vote for, to keep the FY twenty-one fees the same as they currently, without an increase?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
So any further discussion?
Nope.
Um, so we will vote, Carolyn Gallagher, yes? Dines Chavez?
No.
Um, Kathleen, who hates fees as well?
Yes.
Dan Cheedy?
Yes.
And Sherri Cohen?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
For the record, the vote's four to one.
Um, discussion on FY twenty-one, one-twelve budget, Mr. Wells?
Uh, this is the, uh, what you have before you is the one-twelve budget that I'll be turning over to the town. Uh, I'll probably give them a one-twelve budget, then also give them a two-twelve budget, just in case we end up stretching into August on this. Uh, it really is just simply our, uh, this year's budget, twenty-nine, nine, five, seven, six, four, eight divided by twelve. Um, we, we don't recommend um moving forward with a, a one-twelve budget, we really need to get town meeting to happen and get our two-point-five percent voted through. Um, one-twelve budgets are very difficult, uh, they, they, they don't allow you to plan, um, they leave everything kind of up in the air, pushes everything out um that we do. Our, the, the, the school's end-of-year report gets delayed, um, you know, certifying a free cash gets delayed, it, it creates a lot of um, uh, a lot of difficulty in moving forward into the, the new fiscal year.
And I thought the one-twelve was essentially off the table.
I'm sorry? I missed that.
I, I thought the one-twelve was essentially off the table, I thought we were going to a full budget, no?
Uh, well, it's, it's um, basically, we're, we're doing the one-twelve. If, if town meeting for some reason decides, they decide not to have town meeting on the twenty-seventh, we have no choice but to have a one-twelve if we hit July and we don't have a budget in place. So we're, we're providing these numbers, all the departments are providing to the town, they'll submit them and get the one-twelve approved, uh, if we have to operate.
But it, but it's not something we can recommend or not recommend, it's, it's either full, full, or if it's not, then we're stuck with the one-twelve, that is what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
So Matt, is a one-twelve budget just something, who, who decides that? So if, if town meeting does not happen on this June date, um, then basically you automatically go into a one-twelve budget? Does the select board have to vote that in, or is it the town manager who can make that decision, or?
So I, it isn't normally, um, normally one-twelve budgets are reserved for, um, they're not usually used for municipalities, usually used for regional school districts um who have multiple towns taking a vote, and sometimes they just don't get through it. Um, so it would be the town manager that would submit the one-twelve budget for the town, um, it would get approved through DOR and, and pushed back to us. We do understand that um DOR is not gonna be quite as diligent looking over all the one-twelve budgets, because they know that this is a, a unprecedented situation. Um, so it, it would, it's on the town manager to move it forward, and then it gets approved by, from DOR.
Good, thank you.
But the, so far, the, the um selectmen have voted not to go for the one-twelve, but when they, when we get into the town meeting, they're gonna have a budget, correct?
Yes, we have a budget that we're moving forward on town meeting, the, the, the risk is that if for some reason, uh, the town moderator decides that the town meeting cannot move forward because it's not safe, um, then we find ourselves hitting July one and, and we have no choice but to operate under a one-twelve.
Well, considering we'll have a new town moderator who will only be in place for, I think, um, six days, right? Seven days? Um, I'm not sure that gives a lot of time to determine all of that, um, so we will see. Any other discussion? Thanks, Matt.
Sure.
Um, discussion on superintendent evaluation process, Dr. Byetta?
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher, um, so I gave you the draft form of what it looks like, the process has always been that each committee member um fills it out according to what you think, and then you send it to the chair, the chair then compo- makes a composite evaluation. Um, we have a meeting one-on-one to review it, and after that review, it becomes um part of a actual meeting and an actual formal vote and an actual formal announcement. I'm the only employee um that, that goes through that process on the school department side, um, and, and it's public, all other employees is actually protected by state statute, but that's the process. What I'd like to do, because this is, this is the end cycle for me of a two-year, is I'd like to um move forward to have this done um as soon as possible. So I'm gonna be um asking Kathleen, uh, and then in transition to Carolyn, um, to have this done so that um we can get it together and have a meeting, um, and have it, all the ratings and all that stuff that has to happen. Um, all of this is required by statute, including the public hearing and, or the public meeting and all of that, um, and it grades me in the four areas, um, as well as the goals that were set. I already did those for you in the form that I gave you, filled it out in terms of what I, what the goals were, and in terms of, uh, I'm able to provide you further information if, if you need to, to show you significant progress and that I've met the goal. Um, many of these goals are actually a composite of the administrators who work for me, um, because they have different parts of this, uh, that they own. Um, their evaluation process looks a lot like this as well, except it's not public, it's between myself and them. So I'm gonna be asking that we get this done in the month of June, to be quite honest. Um, so uh, once I meet with Kathleen, probably on Monday, maybe even Carolyn, I'll have the two of you together since there'll be a potential transition um there um after the election, um, so that we can get this off our table and not go into September and October like we usually do.
So this is the form that you filled out on yourself, and we still, what, do we print one?
Yeah, so I only, yeah, I only filled out one section, and that was the section on the goals, the school learning goals and district goals, and the reason for that is because it, it shows you the goals that I've already prior reported on, on to you, I reported in um February, actually January, I reported on these goals to you. So now I'm noting where I believe these are at this time, so if you look at implementing the year one vision twenty-twenty, I think I've met that, we've be, we've definitely began to implement that, complete the uh learning walks, and I think we've made some significant pro- progress, we had eight learning walks this year, um, uh, create and implement the portrait of a graduate, again, I think we've made progress in that, but it's not yet met. And then implementing the para- panorama student portal, which I think we've met and we have, I, I would actually say, I said met, but I think it's, I think it's, uh, it's more like exceeded because I think it's, it's a model for the state, what we're doing there. Um, so, and then you guys, um, you guys get to, to fill in the rest of it as individuals, and it's all public record, and, but this, this, the, the agreement that we have is that the committee has one summit of overall agreed to, written by the chair on behalf of everyone by compo- by taking everybody else's input. Sometimes that input is a phone call, sometimes it's the actual form, that's up to you guys on how you wanna do that.
Great. So keep us posted when you'd like to meet.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send a communication.
If you wanna recruit me, okay.
But you, you expect everybody to have this filled out by Monday? Is that what I heard?
No, no, I, I expect, I expect Kathleen and Car- Carolyn and I to have a, a quick meeting on some timelines so that we can share with the rest of the committee, we need to turn it around quicker. Sometimes what we do is, we tell everybody, you have five weeks, and five becomes ten, and ten becomes fifteen, I like to shorten that and say, hey, you got two weeks to get some feedback, if it's not important to have feedback, get it done in weeks.
All right. Um, any other business?
Our next meeting will be on the twenty-fifth, and I also wanna note that that same week on the twenty-fifth, um, you'll probably have an executive session for the purposes of discussing negotiations, if in fact, um, um, the negotiations, recommendations go forward from the NTA, um, and then you'd have to vote in public. Um, and then the meeting after that would be the Saturday, the twenty-seventh, which right now is the scheduled town meeting, so we, I don't even know if there's a time of date for that yet. Um, I'm gonna guess it's in the morning maybe, but I don't know. Um, is it in the morning, Wayne? Just shit in your head, so.
It's scheduled for nine-thirty AM right now.
Wow, nine-thirty in, in June on a Saturday, I'm usually asleep. Um, last day of school is the fifteenth, which is this coming Monday, I just wanna thank all of our families for supporting us, for trusting us during these really difficult times. Um, there has been no other time in our history that we've gone through something like this in public education or in education in general. I wanna thank all the people for their constructive criticism and commentary, I wanna thank the people who've just outright supported us, um, and, and, and all of that, I think it's really, really important, I can't wait to see our students. Um, earlier today, I participated in the learning council meeting, a national meeting with about two-hundred-and-thirty superintendents and district leaders, it was really interesting, I was on a panel with a superintendent from Missouri and a superintendent from Michigan, and it was just really interesting to see what's going on in the other states, and we, the three of us, because we come from Massachusetts, Missouri, and Michigan, we've decided to name ourselves the Three M's, and we're gonna continue to have a dialogue because they have to follow different rules than we do. So the Three M's are gonna be actually trying to put together our leadership teams um in order to have conversations about what's happening so that we maybe can create some interesting ideas going forward. Um, and lastly, I can't do this um without the five of you on the school committee, um, I appreciate very much that you have given us so much flexibility during a really difficult year, um, but to be quite honest, I, I can't do this without my team, and so I wanna, I personally thank the administrators um at the building level and at the central office, and my support staff at the central office for not only putting up with me, but for really just, just running with this, and all I have to do is find the resources or say yes, and that's the easiest thing that I do every day, so thank you to them for their hard work, for their extra hours, for their weekends that they've been putting in during this whole C-nineteen. Um, appreciate them very much, and, and hopefully we can get some rest over the next couple of weeks as we, uh, well, no, that's not gonna happen, so I might not say it.
Okay.
Well, we, um, I think as a school committee, as Norton Public Schools, really do know that we have a, a really great system, so we appreciate all of your work. Um, and I think that in no other district is there such a relationship with the families, um, with you, with the superintendent. So your forums that you've had, Dr. Byetta, have been really appreciated, I think having families engaged, and I think it's been really nice to allow our seniors to have a voice in sort of what potentially um would make kind of their end-of-the-year celebration um meaningful to each of them, so of course, thanks. Um, it's been quite a year.
Yeah, it, it had, and you know what, I can't wa- I can't wait till rock and roll the class of twenty-twenty graduation on the twenty-fifth of July, I can't, I'm so excited for that day.
Do you have something planned? Is it like a secret? You're gonna do something?
Let me just tell you that I've been, I've been known to try to do something that's special, and I'm not gonna let this group get away without saying, you know what, that crazy guy, he was pretty cool, so we're, we're gonna do something, guaranteed.
All right, it's, it's recorded, it's public, start thinking.
I just wanted to mention, Carolyn, I have had a few teachers um who live in Norton, but who teach in other districts, um, reach out to me to just say how well they think that Norton has, has handled everything um in this pandemic, and so I just think that speaks to what you said, Joe, about you, your admin team, um, all of your teachers. I, I think that hearing it from, from other teachers who are in other towns, um, telling us that we've done a great job, I think that's, that's worthy of just noting to you so you can pass that on to your staff.
Thanks, Shannon Taylor has, and Jen O'Neil constantly say all the time, we're, we're gonna do it the Norton way, so um kudos to all of us that are, that are part of this system, and thank you, the five of you guys, allowed for us to really have a CEO model of this, so um it, it, it allows for me to really allow these guys to do their thing, it allows for us to have dynamic conversations with the union and, and with the staff, we had over three-hundred-something people today on a town hall with the staff, and, you know, I, I got a little emotional at the end, just thanking them for just being them, um, you know, it, it makes my job a lot easier, there's always gonna be headaches, but hey, it is what it is.
Well, um, thanks, everyone, I'm not sure, does anybody have any other comments? Yes?
Yeah, I actually, I actually have, uh, just some, something really quick.
Sure.
Uh, follow, follow up to, uh, I don't know, it was one, one or two meetings ago, um, I talked to Laura Parker, who is the chair of the, uh, the charter commission, and um, they, they had not been able to have a meeting with town council subsequent to our discussion on the potential citizens, uh, petitions, et cetera, they were able to have a meeting with town council, town council's actually advised them not to include the school committee in any of those initiatives, the, the tradition initiative and referendum, so it, it sounds like that's actually gonna be off the table, just FYI.
Hmm. Why, what was their reason, Dines? Did she say why town council would advise against that? Why, what was their reason, Dines? Did she say why town council would advise against that?
We did it through email, and the genesis or the gist of it, I guess, was that when they asked town council, "Why do some towns include the school committee and some towns not?" The town council said quite frankly that she didn't know why anyone include the school committee and that it should be restricted to only that which is legislative. And since the school committee does not actually have legislative power, we can't actually enact rules or regulations for the town, that we should not be included. And I get that and I agree with that. I'm okay with oversight on what we do, but at the same time, I'm also fine with it. I bet you Joe is fine with, you know, not having people look over our shoulder all the time too.
Yeah, that makes sense. So thanks for that update. So I think that's it, right? We have some really fun people on our call.
I just want to, Carolyn, thank you so much, and Kathleen. I don't know, by the time we get together, this could be a transition of powers. So thank you, Kathleen, so much for your work this year. And I'm sorry you have to put up with the local Yahoo, but it is what it is. And we all feel familiar after, after all of this.
Are we doing the, so will Cooper and Carolyn do the sing-out? Or should we have the new guys do the sing-out, where they sing the school song?
I think it's Cooper and Carolyn that have to do it.
I think on their first meeting, we'll give it to them. Go ahead, you guys.
You know that there's an actual school song? Did you guys know that?
No.
So ask Ms. Grasso. Ms. Grasso, I believe, I don't, I hate to put her on the spot, so I'm sorry, Ms. Grasso. But Ms. Grasso gave it to me a few years ago. There's actually lyrics from like the 1950s or 60s that, for, that's a school song.
So Joe, if you're the only one that knows us, then sing it. And you and the three M's can sing it together.
Yeah, well, I don't have any...
Is that what you have planned for graduation? You're going to keep it a big secret because that's the graduation song?
It'll definitely keep the numbers down.
You never know. I could have a special guest do my speech. You never know. I'm always up to something.
Once Joe starts singing, we won't have to worry about social distance.
Right.
I'm afraid Joe is going to dance.
I'm waiting to see what he's going to do. So, well, thanks, everybody. So we have to vote to adjourn our meeting, correct?
Yes, please.
So I vote to adjourn the...
Your motion?
A motion to adjourn the school committee meeting. Dan, somebody seconded? I don't know. Did somebody first, seconded? Okay, so Carolyn Gallagher, yes? Dines Chavez, I was going to say local Yahoo, and that's not your name. Dines?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Great, bye, everyone.
Bye, everybody. Good night. Bye, Caroline. Welcome, Zoe. Welcome. Sing the song.